Wow. That is crazy.
He's got a sign, too.
Oh, really?
Okay, seven-two's an additive. This comes later. We need breaks in here today, because there may very well be. In the pink? Oh, so we're live? Okay, just for the at-home players, we're running a little late. Had a long study session, so everybody will be squeezing in here in time. Probably get started in a couple of minutes. What's that? No, I signed one. I signed one. I was able to steal one. Okay, we will go ahead and call the August 25th meeting. We're a few minutes late today. Had a long study session. So if I could get a roll call, please?
Mayor, Householder?
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard?
Here.
Commissioner Crawford?
Here.
Commissioner Hardy?
Here.
At this time, all who are able, if you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Moves us on to awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, the month of September 2014 is National Recovery Month in the city of Salina. Don Green, Senior Recovery Coach with Central Kansas Foundation, will read the proclamation.
Mr. Green.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. Proclamation of the city of Salina proclaiming September is National Recovery Month. Prevention works, treatment is effective, and people recover. Whereas behavioral health is essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas prevention and mental or substance use disorders works, disorders works, treatment is effective, and people recover in our area and around the nation. Whereas preventing and overcoming mental and/or substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. Whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and/or substance use disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of the problem, and guide those in need to the appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And whereas in 2011, 2.3 million people aged 12 or older received specialty treatment for a substance use disorder, and more than 31.6 million adults aged 18 and over receives mental health services, according to the 2011 National Survey on Drugs and Health. Given the serious nature of this public health problem, we must continue to reach the millions more who need help. And whereas on October 1st, 2014, as a result of Affordable Care Act, more than 11 million uninsured individuals with behavioral health needs will become eligible for affordable insurance coverage with their treatment needs. According to the 2011 National Survey on Drug Use and Health, we must ensure that all of these individuals are successfully enrolled into coverage. And whereas, to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Service Administration, the White House Office on National Drug Control Policy, and Central Kansas Foundation Pathfinder Recovery Center invite all residents of Salina to participate in National Recovery Month.
You have any events planned for the...
Yes, sir, we do. Our theme this year is Support Recovery. And it's September 4th through 6th. The Central Kansas Foundation, Find Your Path to Recovery. Millions of people are in recovery. They are your neighbors, your doctor, your teacher, your parent, or your child. Supporting recovery means you support people battling a terrible disease. You support strengthening families, lowering healthcare costs, and helping someone find long-term employment. You support your community. This September, join us as we raise awareness of the millions of people who have found their hope in recovery. Our first evening is Thursday, September 4th. It's an evening with Mary Gaultier, and that's at 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Blue Heaven Studios, 201 South 8th Street. It's $15 a ticket. Mary is a nationally recognized American troubadour, singer and songwriter with a history in Salina and recovery. Her raw emotional storytelling is one act you don't want to miss. Tickets are $15 each and available at CKF's administrative offices. Pathfinder Recovery Center are online at www-c-k-f.org. All proceeds go to CKF's Pathfinder at 50 Capital Campaign. On Friday, September 5th, we're having a barbecue in Open House, 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Pathfinder Recovery Center at 1809 South Salina. It is free. The Pathfinder is a drop-in community service offering services and scheduled events to support and provide information about addiction and recovery. Come check out Pathfinder and support a good cause. There'll be free games, activities, food, and fun for the whole family. And on Saturday, September 5th, we're having our #SupportRecovery Walk from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Starts at the corner of Ash and Santa Fe and goes down to the Masonic Temple. Recovery looks like you and me. Help in the stigma of shame surrounding addiction and join us as we walk down Santa Fe. We'll have people sharing their recovery stories afterwards. You don't want to miss it.
Great. I've heard good things about the artist coming to Salina. I heard a couple of local artists who had heard her before and said it's just a really great show. And that is Thursday...
That's Thursday, September 4th, from 7:00 to 9:00 at Blue Heaven.
At Blue Heaven Studios, okay. Well, great, yeah.
Yeah, she was at the Casa de Amigas.
Yeah, I kind of remember a little bit back then. I had a lot of friends who were in recovery and had come up from Louisiana. Of course, Chad Kassem, who owns Blue Heaven Studios, of course, was a Louisiana transplant and has become a successful business owner. I think they employ about 80 people in Salina, in North Salina, so success story there. And it sounds like she is as well, so looking forward to that.
She reminds me of a Lady John Prine, and it just kind of...
Well, it's, like I said, I know Ann Zimmerman, for one, cornered me and said, "Man, she'll pull your heart right out. She's really good." So looking forward to that. I have your signed proclamation up here.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners.
Thank you.
That'll move us on to our citizens forum. This is an opportunity for anyone to come up and speak regarding an item that is not on today's agenda. I would ask that you just please give us your name and address if you have something to add. Great, please.
Hi, Dance Benoit, 1773 20th Road, Ellsworth County. But of course, again, I need to preface that by, I was born here, so was my mother. So that's my concern. And for well over 60 years, I never read the back of a toothpaste tube. And so I thought it'd be interesting for the people of Salina to verify what I'm going to tell you. Back in 1979, the FDA ordered the toothpaste manufacturers to put on a poison warning on the fluoridated toothpaste. So basically, it will read, and you can verify it, on your child's toothpaste tube. Do not swallow. You need to supervise young children to minimize swallowing. And then this is the size for a brushing, and most people have never heard of this. It's a pea-size for your children, a pea-size. And if you use more than a pea-size, then you need to call a physician or your local poison control. And so the good thing about that is you now have a choice. Back a few years ago, almost 100% had fluoride in them, which is a poison. So that's why they have to put on the warning. Well, now, there's ones you can get on the Internet. I got my Toms over at Dylan's. That's basically that information, and that you can check that out and get on the Internet. I suggest that, like on Facebook, you can get in touch with Salina Cares. We try to keep it updated. One of the latest things about toothpaste is the Triclozin in the Colgate Total. If you're not familiar with that, I think they've taken out almost the hand antibacterial soaps, but they still have it in one toothpaste. So you might check on there and find some interesting stuff. And that's about it. I would just hope that the people at Insalina would vote yes to stop fluoridation.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone else have anything they'd like to bring before the Commission today? Okay, thank you. That'll move us on to, have no public hearings or items scheduled, it moves on to consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of August 18th, 2014. Item 6.2, Resolution Number 14-7131, appointing members to various boards and commissions. Item 6.3, Resolution Number 14-7128, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Madison Farms, Inc. of New Cambria, Kansas, for services related to the transportation and land application of municipal wastewater biosolids. Item 6.4, authorize the mayor to execute a specialty contractor agreement for laboratory support, site-wide remedial investigation, chemical testing of soil, sediment, and water to Continental Analytical Services, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $78,325.50. A specialty contractor agreement for laboratory support, site-wide remedial investigation, chemical testing of vapor to ESC laboratory, or lab services, in an amount not to exceed A specialty contractor agreement for laboratory support, site-wide remedial investigation to geotechnical testing of soil to ALS, environmental, in an amount not to exceed $5,670. A specialty contractor agreement for surveying support, site-wide remedial investigation to Wilson &amp; Company, Inc., engineers and architects, in an amount not to exceed $31,066. A specialty contractor agreement for drilling support, site-wide remedial investigation to Environmental Priority Services, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $146,630. A specialty contractor agreement for drilling support, site-wide remedial investigation to GeoCore, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $57,418, and reject the bid for waste disposal support, site-wide remedial investigation from environmental management. Item 6.5, authorize the mayor to sign the first supplemental agreement with Cal Valley Engineering, Inc. of Salina to perform design services for the purchase of replacing Iron Avenue from Front Street to Delaware Street. Item 6.6, Resolution Number 14-7129, establishing various fees for services in the comprehensive fee schedule of the city of Salina, Kansas.
Is there anything on the consent agenda the Commission would like removed or amended?
I'd like to remove item number 6.4 from the consent agenda.
Okay. Any other items?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda minus item 6.4?
Second.
Motion is second to remove item 6.4 and approve the consent agenda as remaining. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. That'll take us to item 6.4, then. Ms. Tasker, I believe, on this one. You weren't prepared to come up and... Bet you didn't think in a million years we'd be talking about this. 9,300... Oh, no, it's more. Okay, sorry. No, it is less.
I was, just one, I had a question and comment on this one. The first is that of the contracts that are being awarded, I wanted to note that four of the six contracts are awarded locally, which I think is commendable, and it's also nice to know that we have that much interest from local companies to participate in this project. The other, the question I had was concerning the surveying support for the site-wide remedial investigation?
Yes.
That was suggested to go to Wilson &amp; Company. There was a bid that was submitted by Schwab Eaton from Manhattan for considerably less money, and evidently, the bid was thrown out because he wasn't considered a pre-qualified contractor. And I was just curious, would it be necessary, I mean, not necessary, would have been standard operating procedure for Schwab Eaton to know that they needed to be pre-qualified?
In this case, all of the proposals that went out identified that as a need, and we had pre-qualified during the other course of the work, Wilson &amp; Company and Cal Valley. And at this point to date, Schwab Eaton had not sent in the information that Reagan could evaluate to confirm that they were qualified to do the work. So the requirement has been to be pre-qualified has been the case of all of the other contractors for every project that's been put in place.
I was just wondering if that had been communicated to Schwab Eaton in advance of this proposal?
Yes, it was identified that you had to be pre-qualified to submit a proposal, and if you had not been pre-qualified, it was necessary to do so. So it was included in the RFP.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? If not, I entertain a motion on this.
Does it mean I should read this whole thing again, since I'm the one that brought it up?
I think that's fair.
I move that we authorize the mayor to execute a specialty contractor agreement for laboratory support, site-wide remedial investigation, chemical testing of soil, sediment, and water to Continental Analytical Services Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $78,325.50. A specialty contractor agreement for laboratory support, site-wide remedial investigation, chemical testing of vapor to ESC lab services, in an amount not to exceed $33,478. A specialty contractor agreement for laboratory support, site-wide remedial investigation to geotechnical testing of soil to ALS, environmental, in an amount not to exceed $5,670. A specialty contractor agreement for surveying support, site-wide remedial investigation to Wilson &amp; Company Incorporated, engineers and architects, in an amount not to exceed $31,066. A specialty contractor agreement for drilling, support-wide remedial investigation to Environmental Priority Services Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $146,630. A specialty contractor agreement for drilling, support-wide remedial investigation to GeoCore Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $57,418, and reject the bid for waste disposal, support-wide remedial investigation from environmental management.
I'm guessing that second part is not what we want, correct? Is that...
The, that is one component of the action.
Oh, there's one component, I'm sorry.
It would be necessary to take, yes. That was an isolated circumstance that just needed to be tended to.
And that's okay on there?
I'm sorry.
That's okay on there. I add that this, that's just part of this.
That would be appropriate. It would be fine in this case.
Okay, thank you. A little concern there. So we have a motion as second on this, and...
Who seconded? Oh, I didn't hear.
Commissioner Crawford.
Okay.
Any further discussion on this? Thank gosh. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? The motion carries 5-0. I know you should show up a little later. I didn't know if you were here for the public forum, part of the meeting at all. Okay, just making sure. I just, I didn't want to forget you, because we got started kind of late and we kind of rushed through our opening, so just... Oh, that's right, that's right. I didn't recognize you. I'm sorry. Well, okay, well, it's not too late to get up and give her a piece of her mind, one last time.
She does that enough at home. We don't need it on TV.
Okay, great, okay.
Thank you. Maybe she'd give you a piece of her mind.
That's right, yeah. Maybe I should have been there and told her.
Anything you'd like to tell the mayor?
Forget what I said about opening that forum again. That'll move us on to administration, then.
Item 7.1, Resolution Number 14-7132, approving the bench advertising plan submitted by OCCK.
Mr. Cage.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I think this is a pretty easy one. Excuse me, you showed an interest in OCCK being able to leverage sponsorships, advertising to offset the cost of their public transportation program in the past. The contract we have with them actually provides the ability to do that. As long as they create the plan, you approve the marketing plan, and then, of course, they follow that, and the proceeds go back into the transportation system that's part of the contract. So then, if you do that, they can solicit and sell the advertising at the loading and unloading locations. So we have attached their bench advertising plan. At this point, they're focusing on the benches with the kind of descriptive information of what they'd like to do to go about that. The options that you have are to approve or deny that at this time, but if you approve it, then they'll be able to do that, and whatever they can raise will go against the program. Quite honestly, I wouldn't anticipate it'd be very significant when you look at the scope of the program, but any dollar that goes back into it's better than none at all, so it's a good opportunity.
Sure. Any questions for staff on this?
I was wondering, do you know how much money is received from advertising inside the bus?
I don't. Yeah, I don't know how much they generate from inside the bus.
Would that be covered under that 6.3 as well?
No, it wouldn't. 6.3 is pretty specific about the loading and unloading locations. Without going through the whole agreement, I can look and see if the city attorney has a better recollection than I do, but I would imagine they have the unlimited ability within the bus to advertise, but I don't know if our agreement addresses that or restricts it in any way. We probably don't, but I'd have to look through to see for sure.
What about, yeah, I mean, obviously, we start getting into a little bit of what's advertising and what, who we want advertising, and I know we get very limited as to what we can say. Maybe rather than get to that point, let's attack an easier one. If someone advertises, for instance, on a bench, and then they decide they no longer want to advertise, is there a plan that OCCK would then clear that advertisement off or remediate the bench back to what it was before? Or has there been any...
Yeah, I would expect so, because there's, on most of the benches, it's a pretty good investment, so I'm presuming the advertisements will be attached in a way they can be detached pretty easily. So, yeah, if they, someone signs, I don't know what kind of terms they may end up with, but say it's a one-year term, and the vendor says, "I don't want to advertise," I would expect that theirs would come off, and then if someone else is interested, theirs would be put on that same bench.
Yeah, they covered that.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, the one I had is, it says signage may not be inappropriate propaganda. So my question would be, what is inappropriate propaganda?
That's a very good question.
That's my reelection advertisement, yeah.
At least I'm sensitive.
Right, yeah. I'm glad they're the ones making the determination of it.
In that kind of case, since we're talking about, to a degree, a little bit of speech perhaps in there, it's probably best left to them.
Right.
We don't get involved with that.
Okay, good enough. Any other questions, sir, staff? Anyone here from the public care to comment on this? No? Okay, I'll bring it back for possible action.
I move we approve Resolution Number 14-7132 to approve the bench advertising plan as submitted by OCCK.
Second.
Motion is second to approve Resolution Number 14-7132. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Item 7.2, Resolution Number 14-7133, approving an amendment to the May 12th, 2014 agreement between the city of Salina and Assurance Partners, LLC, for a public parking easement and development of public improvements.
Mr. Shreg.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. When all is said and done, the item before you is really a change order that the city commission's being asked to consider, where the city's participation will be $12,500 of a total expense of $14,500. That typically would be a staff item, addressed under the discretion and the authority of the city manager. However, the Assurance Partners project was the subject of a resolution and an agreement for use of the parking lot for public purposes, and also then, an agreement that the city would contribute financially for work and improvements in the right-of-way. So since it was entered into in that fashion, the change order is coming back to you as an amendment to that original resolution and agreement. As a little bit of background, you may recall that the Assurance Partners project started out as the building and the site itself. There was some discussion about expansion of the parking lot to the east between the Assurance Partners building and the railroad tracks for the purpose of business use by Assurance, and then public use by Salina Community Theater in the downtown, and that was the basis of our agreement. There was also some recognition that there are a lot of improvements being made on the site, and there was an opportunity to incorporate into that project improvements to the Iron Street right-of-way. And so that was the work that was agreed to. So as a little bit of additional background, the original agreement covered six items. It was the Iron Avenue curb line relocation and elimination of the angled parking spaces on Iron Street. And I don't want to shoot you in the face with a laser there, Mike, but if you are familiar with the site, this would be Fifth Street and Iron Avenue, and there were four angled parking spaces that straddled what would have been the curb line, or maybe formerly was the curb line. So half of the parking space was on the property side of the curb line, and the other half actually stuck out into Iron Avenue. And the way that that was accomplished was that what used to be the flow line of the curb was filled in with a pipe, and then pavement was laid over that. So the cross slope of the street was changed, and it was kind of an odd configuration, both in terms of the parking stalls sticking into Iron Avenue, as well as the way that the stormwater flow was handled from west to east. And ultimately, that unique configuration is what now is having to be addressed with a change order. The second item associated with the original agreement was replacement of the Fifth Street concrete parallel parking area and relocation of that curb line on Fifth Street, and that was to accommodate relocation of some existing streetlights that were going to be replaced with the new decorative lights, and they were on private property, and this created an opportunity to get them in the right-of-way. The third item was the private parking lot installation and public use provisions that I mentioned earlier to the east of the building. The fourth item was installation of parking drive entrances along Iron Street and the entrance approaches within the right-of-way. The fourth item was Iron Avenue storm inlet relocation, because as it previously said, it would be in one of the drive entrances. And then the sixth item was sidewalk replacement and extension to replace the sidewalk that adjoins Fifth Street, as well as extend it all the way to the existing sidewalk on the bridge there on Iron Avenue, so that that made a full connection from the newly proposed parking lot to Salina Community Theater. So on May 12th, we, you entered into the agreement with the Assurance Partners for that work. Agreed to pay $52,289 towards the work that was going to occur in the right-of-way in return for the parking lot being made available to the public. And I guess as a side note, the work within the right-of-way would be something that would be the city's expense typically. It was really more a function of timing. It wasn't something that was in our capital improvement plan, and the request was made to sync that up with the Assurance project. And so authorization was given to do that. The issue that's come up is at the time, there was survey work done, I guess, in multiple phases as the project kind of changed and grew. And there was survey work that was done at 50-foot intervals, but it failed to pick up that section that I was talking about with the four angled parking spaces. So as you looked at the survey work, it, on paper, looked like it just naturally flowed from west to east. In the field, the only way that that was really being accomplished was by the existence of that pipe that filled in the curb line. And what it really did was straddle a high point in between. And so when time came to get the roadway back to a more typical road section, is when staff and the contractors and the designer realized that the assumptions previously were that it would take about two feet of mill and inlay to kind of marry all that together. It was turning into mill and inlay all the way to the center line of Iron Avenue, and still would have a cross slope that was going to be noticeable and significant, approaching, if not exceeding, our recommended cross slopes for streets. So at that point, Earl's Engineering redesigned a solution that basically installed a pipe below the curb line and took it to the inlet box, and that's where the $14,500 worth of cost is coming from. Staff worked with Mr. Earl's to vet those, vet that design, review it, and approve it, as well as the cost. And we tried to be mindful that, number one, the cost that we were being asked to pay was within the scope that was originally part of the project, was within the right-of-way work that the city would be expected to participate in, and then also to compare the costs we're receiving now to what we might have expected as a competitive bid if it were part of the original project. And long story short, looking at past bid tabulations and conferring with Mr. Earl's, we concluded that there's about a $2,000 premium that we're realizing, having to do it as a change order at the end of the project. Hence, we've agreed, we've negotiated $12,500 for the city's share of the change order, with the other $2,000 being picked up by Earl's Engineering. So Earl's Engineering would be designed, has designed the solution, and will be paying that net difference between what we thought would be a competitive amount and what we feel like is kind of a premium now that it's a change order. Having said all that, I would tell you, too, that a typical approach to a design error, I guess you could say, or design oversight like this, would be recognition that the designer prepares the revised design at their expense, and the owner, us, and... designer prepares the revised design at their expense, and the owner, us in this case, but the owner would have been expected to pay the cost on the front end if it had been identified on the front end. And that can be a little uncomfortable or frustrating as the owner, but it is fairly typical to say, "Well, you would have paid for it had we known it on day one." Unfortunately, we now know it on day forty-five, and here's the bill. So, that's why staff spent the time that we did reviewing the cause of the problem, the solution, as well as kind of the competitive cost versus the bids that we're now seeing. And so, from staff's perspective, we feel like twelve-thousand five hundred is the appropriate cost associated with the scope of work that would have been part of the project on day one, had we recognized the need for the pipe and inlet that's now being proposed. So I tried to tell that in a more layman's and logical way than the staff report might provide. In terms of conformance with the strategic plan, there are a lot of downtown initiatives and connectivity initiatives in our strategic plan that this seems to conform with. It looks like we identified one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of them, as well as four goals that it seems to be consistent with.
Very good.
Yeah.
What's that?
Very good.
Well, I can read them all if you'd like.
No, we're good.
Long story short, the city's fiscal note would be the total cost of the work is fourteen-thousand five hundred. Earl's Engineering has agreed to fund two thousand of that, with the resulting net cost to the city of twelve-thousand five hundred. Staff believes that's applicable to the scope of work that would have been ours from the outset. The options we've identified for your consideration are to approve Resolution Number 14-7133 as presented. You could provide additional direction to staff regarding the allocation of expenses associated with work, request that the item be returned to you for your consideration at a specified date, or you could choose not to approve Resolution 14-7133, resulting in no agreement to fund the additional scope of work. I would note, the project is stalled at the moment, the entrances in question have yet to be completed awaiting this resolution. So, while that may be an option, practically, I'm not sure where that leaves us. Staff would recommend option number one, approving the resolution and the change order and the costs associated with it.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
Does this, has this been what the holdup is there with thing?
Yes.
Okay, so, how long, this thing can get going immediately then, and they can get that wrapped up?
Yes, I believe so. We have the estimates from the subcontractor, I don't know their exact timing, but everyone is waiting on an answer from us.
Okay, yeah, it's because that sidewalk and that intersection is kind of hanging up there in the air a little bit, so that'll be different from pedestrian standpoint, so...
The elevation bust between the street and the curb line is significant.
Well, it'll make the building look finished, how about that? How about that?
It will be a noticeable improvement to the intersection, to remove the pipes that were there previously, sticking up vertically, and the parking spaces hanging into the intersection.
Sure, sure. Any public comment on this issue at all? Okay, we'll bring it back to commission for possible action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number 14-7133, approving an amendment to the May 12, 2014 agreement between the City of Salina and Assurance Partners LLC for a public park easement and development of public improvements.
Second.
Motion is second to adopt Resolution Number 14-713, let her have it, it's her last day, come on. Motion is second to adopt Resolution Number 14-7133, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. That takes us on, we have no development business, takes us on to other business.
I have something under other business.
Other business, sure, of course.
Before we start with Mr. Davis?
Sure, of course.
I wanted to address a little bit about the domestic violence that we've had in Salina. It seems like we've had a lot of events lately, and I asked the police chief for some figures on how many calls are made because of domestic violence, and I received those numbers, as well as I received some numbers from D-VAC office on how many women are sheltered. And I think it points out a lack of respect for women and children. I've talked to a lot of women in the community, I've reserved, I have observed, and as we all have, disrespectful remarks made in public meetings right here in City Hall. There's definitely, it seems like, a lack of civility. In a recent article, I think just Saturday or Sunday in the Salina Journal, that was about Judge Helmer, he mentioned also a rise or a spike in violence. So with the permission of the mayor and my colleague commissioners, I'd like to request our community relations department to get out in the community and do some, get some conversations going in the neighborhoods about, just about domestic violence and violence against women and children. I'd like to see members of D-VAC, health department workers, social service workers, teachers, nurses, police, child abuse prevention folks, and many others involved, and I don't know that this will help a whole lot, but community conversation cannot hurt, and disrespect for each other often manifests itself in violence against women and children. So, I hope we can get a conversation going all throughout the community that will be helpful and maybe get a little more civility back in, to the city. That's all I have.
Great, great, fantastic.
Absolutely.
On a lighter note.
Is that something, is that something that you'll be able to pass on then to community relations?
Sure, absolutely. Good.
Community engagement officer.
There you go, yeah, and obviously important issue, I don't mean to downplay that, but I had planned to speak, Commissioner Blanchard, Vice Mayor Blanchard, and Commissioner Hardy and I went to Gracie Stewart School today and did their mile walk with the kids, and I guess they're doing this, I wasn't aware of this until last week, our community engagement information officer made me aware, and we went out and walked with the kids, and it's kind of an interesting deal, they get up and they walk a mile every day for...
Six weeks.
Six weeks. So it basically becomes a marathon. Of course, we were walked dressed like, well, I think you were in maybe a lighter shirt, but we were dressed like this, and it was a bad choice of clothing, to say the least, when we walked. But it was really neat to get out there, you know, as we discussed in our earlier meeting, you know, talking about the health of our young children and trying to get them engaged. And I thought it was a great way the parents, there were a lot of parents there, which engaged the parents with each other, so they had some conversation. The kids were socializing, which I think we do far too little of these days, as we are all on our computers and everything else. And it was really a neat deal, and the kids seemed to be having fun, there was a few of them that maybe were, maybe it was just the three of us, but they were complaining, but for the most part, it seemed like a pretty good, pretty good, pretty good deal. And so, again, I don't mean to downplay what Commissioner Crawford was discussing at all, but just something I'd planned on, a real plus for our community, it's very, very nice.
And I believe, is this the third year, Jason, they've done that, or the fourth year? I know it's fairly a new concept, and it's went over well, and I believe it was a local idea.
Yeah, that's a good question, I really don't know.
I think they did say it was the third year.
The third or fourth year, right, right. Dr. Wiles helped come up with this with the schools.
Well, it was impressive, it was neat. Like I said, it was just a kind of a fun before activity. When I was a kid at South Junior High, we had a circle library, we'd just sit there and walk around, talk, and it's kind of the same thing, it's kind of like a little social hour, but they're exercising and socializing, so it was really a neat deal.
And if you do the 26 miles, they get a T-shirt afterwards, so they have their bragging rights that they did it.
Yeah, I don't think any of the three of us will be doing the complete tour.
We got sticks.
Yeah, we got, yeah.
I actually saw the kids out there this morning when I drove by.
In one day, yeah, in one day, yeah.
The kids seemed to be into it.
They were, they really were.
They enjoyed it.
It was a lot of fun, so, anyway.
If they're not in class, of course it's fun.
Point that out as well, so. I think that's, there's no other business, we'll go on to the other, other business. Is that a proper way to characterize that?
Okay, at this time, I will call Trent Davis up to the front to administer oath of office.
Right there. Yes, sir.
Wherever she goes.
There you go. All right, if you can raise your right hand and repeat after that. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of City Commissioners.
Of the Office of City Commissioners.
In and for the city and Salina, Kansas.
In and for the city and Salina, Kansas.
So help me God. Okay? Good job.
Great. Is there a process? Is there a process, do we bring him up to give a little quick commissioner's speech or anything, or is Ms. Shirley?
Put him on the spot immediately.
Any party words? I'll just say this, don't plan on wearing a tie every meeting, because I'm still not going to wear one.
That won't fly.
Do you have something you would like to say?
It'll be short, my wife doesn't believe that. I just wanted to publicly thank Barb Shirley for your tireless years of service, and we expect to see you back on the political front sometime in the future.
I hope so. Well, thank you.
And thank my wife for giving me permission to do this.
That's what it boils down to.
Fantastic. So interim city commissioner Trent Davis will assume the liaison roles on the boards previously served by Commissioner Shirley. Those boards will include the Salina Housing Authority and Convention and Tourism, which, by the way, has a decent breakfast when they do it.
They do.
So it's a good way to start. So with that, I suppose if there's nothing else, I would...
I just...
Oh, I'm sorry, no, 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 not at all.
I didn't know if I should go there now.
Of course, of course.
But I do want to thank all of you, especially Erin and Kay, because we've been here from, you know, the last three and a half years, and then my new commissioners that joined on board this last year. You guys really did help me out a lot, you know, one month after I was sworn in as the mayor is when my dad was diagnosed with terminal cancer, and that took me away from a lot of meetings and a lot of my board appointments, and at the time, vice mayor, householder, then, I would step in and fill in a lot for me. And I do appreciate you guys, just, you know, the emails and the text messages and some phone calls from some of you throughout the last year, and just the support from the city staff and from the public and from the community of, you know, the City of Salina, I love this place, it's home to me, and everyone's been very supportive. I do see some people out here that have supported me from the first time I ran for office, and Dr. Davis and Phil Black, my mom, and my son over there, is wanting to say thank you to everybody, I'm going to miss you guys, but I'm not going to be a complete stranger to the meetings, I'll still have my Monday off here and there, I'll come out here and pester you, or come up and speak, and razz you a little bit, but it's been, it's been a good three and a half years, and I don't want to disappear from public office completely, you know, hopefully in the next few years I can regroup and regather and, you know, come back with a vengeance, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. With that, I entertain, it feels weird, we're just before five. You guys sure don't want to knock off another hour and a half?
Maybe a couple weeks, another commissioner's...
We could let Commissioner Shirley do the honors.
What's that? Oh, there we go. I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That, we are adjourned.